Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Downtown Grand Forks, Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole for Monday, July 11th under Item 1, Call to Order 1.1. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel, Osowski, Weber, Lunskey, Cavani, Sandy, Veen.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, and Weber's here too. Item, under Discussion Items, Item 2.1, Noise Variance in Letter of Intent for Co-Mingling During Downtown Development Association Street Fair. Ms. Simeoni, good evening.
Hi, good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. I bring to you a variance here, not a variance, but a request for co-mingling and noise variance as we've seen before from the Downtown Development Association. This is for the Downtown Street Fair. They are going to be bringing in four different of their downtown brewers that will be actually providing alcohol during the time of about 12, 12 to 5:00 p.m. This has already gone through all of the different special event departments. It also has been heard and read and approved through the police department, which is a requirement of the co-mingling.
Any comments, questions?
I'll move approval.
Mr. Weber moves approval. Is there a second by Veen? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.2, Award Bids 2022-11 Structural Collapse. It says requeue, but they're rescue struts. Chief, evening.
Good evening. President Sandy, members of the council. We've previously done regional response throughout the state and our region, provided for the city of Grand Forks as well. We're replacing rescue struts. We went to bid for it. We had two successful bidders, and we're recommending that Grand Forks fire equipment be awarded low bid, and we included a bid tab with the documents and whatnot.
Any questions? How often do we use these rescue struts?
Well, unfortunately, several times a year because we do temporary stabilization of structures that get ran into by vehicles, and then we replace that with lumber that the, basically, the buildings absorb, and we tend to build insurance companies for lumber if we can. We use them several times a year.
Great, interesting. Yes, Mr. Re.
Did you use these when, all through clinic?
Yes, we did.
Because, as I recall, was out there, we used those initially, right?
Yep, yes, sir.
Great, any other questions? Any thoughts? The bids were almost exactly the same, so I'm feeling pretty good about the bids. Removed by Weber, is there a second? By Lunskey, thank you. No other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.3, PSAP Surplus Vehicle, a 2002 Mercury Mountaineer.
We have a new PSAP director, Council President Sandy. So maybe she should introduce herself, and we're thankful that she's the new department.
A long-time employee.
Yes, in a long time. So another succession, success story.
Introduce yourself.
Shannon LaHayes, I've been with the department since 1997. So, the flood brought me here.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. LaHayes. Congratulations.
Thank you. We're here, submitted, we had a 2002 Mercury Mountaineer that was acquired by PSAP as a surplus vehicle from the fire department. We've now replaced that with a 2022 Chevy Traverse as the replacement, and so now this is no longer needed. We will use it for, our radio systems coordinator goes out to the rural fire departments and assists with the new siren program, as well as training.
Great, and we're going to sell the?
We're going to sell it.
Mercury?
Yep.
Any questions? Moved by Weber, second by Osowski. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.4, we're going to create district for Project 8544, District Number 588, Stormwater Pond Number 1 for Grand Valley First Edition. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and committee members. This is our first construction project in the recently plotted and annexed Grand Valley First Edition development. This will construct a regional stormwater pond servicing two quarter sections of land, so it is a, it is a quite large pond compared to others we have constructed in the past. This is at the request of the developer, Crary Real Estate, and they've requested full special assessment of this minus the city cost share. By our CIP cost share policy, this qualifies for the full 20%, maximum 20% cost share, which would be paid for out of fund 5,400 stormwater. So there is an attached map which shows the assessment district and also a timeline of project milestone dates. The goal is to have this awarded in October and then have winter construction on this project. The estimated construction cost of the pond itself is about $3.8 million, and about another $340,000 for consultant costs, which will be presented at the next, the next staff report after this one. But with that, engineering is requesting approval of the engineers' report, creation of the special assessment district, and direction to prepare plans and specifications.
Questions by the committee? Mr. Lieberman, is that pond large enough to handle the other half of that square of?
It is.
It is.
It is. It's sized for the entire quarter section, which is bounded by 62nd Avenue on the north, 69th Avenue on the south, Washington Street on the east, and South 20th Street on the west. Plus, it's also sized for incremental flow of another pond in the quarter section south of it, so it's a chaining effect of ponds.
But we're special assessing the whole pond to that half section?
We're, if I could ask you to turn to the map, sorry, I can't bring it up on the screen here. The two quarter sections that are reflected in the staff report show the entire assessment district. There is a future assessment area, which is about three quarters of the area highlighted here.
Very good. Just confirming, that's great. Any other? Mr. Veen, yes, sir.
Like, you know, on the both of the west and east edge, they go to the centerline, right? What's that line of, and section line of South Washington on the west side, and the centerline of 20th?
Correct.
Even though the street itself will take, you know, your drainage is a better split right at the centerline, right?
It roughly does, but there are some variations.
I mean, you amend it on both sides, right?
Right.
And you're going to connect it. So you do end up with drainage outside of the area, but I'm assuming that this is just policy-wise, how you would do that?
Yeah, this, this is typically the, the drainage basin that would drain into that pond. There are slight variations around the edge, but generally speaking, it's serving these properties in this area.
Any other comments or questions? Moved by Veen, is there a second? Second by Osowski, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Item 2.5, Engineering Agreement for Project 8544, District 558, Stormwater Pond, Grand Valley First Edition. Mr. Lieberman.
Thank you. This is the corresponding task order, proposed task order with CPS of Grand Forks. This would encompass design, hydraulic and hydrologic analysis, and construction services for this project.
Any questions? Engineering moved by Weigel, your second. By Osowski, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.6, thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Item 2.6, Amendment Number 1, Engineering Agreement, Project 859, Reconstruct North Columbia Road. Mr. Grasser, good evening, sir.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. We're wrapping up a project that, the majority of the work was done a couple of years ago on, if you remember, North Columbia Road from the overpass, basically North University Avenue. And that's a project in which we secured federal dollars, so we followed the federal process on that. Contractor did, again, most of the work in 2020, I think, probably now. Within that project, we did hire a outside consultant to do the design and the construction inspection, those kinds of things. As is fairly typical with a larger project like that, you do run into unexpected items, change orders, delays, et cetera, that, that end up on a project and impact the engineering fees. So we've been working with and negotiating with KJ, they're the consultant that was doing the work for us, and we have come up with, and requested amendment for engineering services in the amount of $52,454.45. This is a cost share with the state, so our share is going to be about $10,500. The state will pick up the remainder, the remainder of that. There are also some liquidated damages coming out of the project. I don't have an exact amount, but we're going to get some of that money probably back through liquidated damages, so our, we're recommending approval of this engineering amendment.
Any comments or thoughts? What are liquidated damages? What does that mean?
Those are our recognition of damages and delays to the traveling public, basically, if you're not meeting some of your completion dates.
I'll move approval. Great, moved by Weber, second by Weigel. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Grasser. 2.7, Lead Service Line Replacement Program.
Council President Sandy, member of the community, Melanie Farry couldn't make it tonight, but this is one of the, our really terrific programs. We've tried for, for a couple of years, and along came a federal infrastructure reinvestment in our country program, of which a lot of it was dedicated to lead service lines, and so we did apply, and as the letter states from the state of North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, we did receive funds of $375,000. The important part of this is 90% of that on dollar amount is forgivable. They're using the drinking water SRF program, and in this case, because it's lead service lines, it's, it's in our interest, whether it's the federal, state, local, to replace those lines. The city is planning through our Water Works Enterprise Fund to pay for the city's cost share, and so we've already notated all the various lead service lines that we have in our community, and we do intend to, you know, prioritize all those service lines, get those replaced. So we think this is the year one, and hopefully we can continue to move forward with more and more, and these are concerns, if you heard about Flint, Michigan, and all the concerns, what happened is they went to a new, a different water source. I think they went to Lake Michigan versus a river or whatever to save some costs. Well, what happened is it had a corrosive ability, and mainly in the service lines, and then it got into people's homes, and obviously it caused a lot of problems, and so the more we can get rid of lead service lines that are still in existence, the better off we are. You should know, all of our service lines, we make sure our drinking water is not corrosive, so when it, it goes through a lead service line, it's not going to scrape any of the lead that comes out of that. We are required to sample those homes that have the lead service to make sure that there's nothing going on that's in towards, but this will get us to replace all those, and this is the, the start of the, of the beginning of the end.
This will get us to replace all of them, or this will get us to start?
This will be a good start, very good start.
Really good start, great. And we're going to notify the homeowners, and we're going to prioritize which homes go first?
We will.
Any idea how you make that determination?
I think we'll look at age, issues in neighborhoods where we've had some concerns, and so hopefully we can, we can knock out many of them. I don't remember the exact number, but our, our water distribution department has been working on that. I see Lisa Button in the back, I don't know if you know any more than what I'm talking about right now, Lisa. We'll have Lisa come up and maybe further inform us.
Probably not, but I'll try.
Ms. Button, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. Yes, we are conducting surveys throughout the city. We know most homes, or a lot of the homes that were built before 1950, have lead service line, and we have a really good handle on how many they are, but we've been sending out postcards to those that we are unsure of, letting them notify us if they, there's a way for them to tell if they have it. If they're not sure, we'll come out and look for them. So we've, we're going through that process right now, and we'll, as we continue to do that, we'll, I think we've got three or four years to confirm what we've got, and it's, it's in the homes is the hard part, right? So we don't know what people have in, on all of their individual homes, so we're doing the best we can to get outreach to them and get feedback, and we'll go through this process and through that postcard, we will make them aware too, when they get back to us, that this program's available to assist with replacing those lines.
That's, that's great, that's wonderful. Yes, Mr. Veen.
So is this from the main to the curb stop, or is it from the curb stop to the home? And what about within the home? I mean, all three of those can have lead lines, right?
It's, yes, and I think we're mostly concerned with what's in the home, because from, and there's some areas where from the curb stop to the home, there is, there's lead, lead still there too, but we can usually tell from where they're connecting to the meter in the home. Our water distribution crew has a good idea of the curb stop to the home, and then what's in the home, you know, if they have older pipes within the home too. So it's, it's, it's both. Our mains are good, as Todd mentioned.
The mains are all good, yeah.
Yeah, it's just the, and this can assist them with both, with that.
So all of that needs to be replaced at some point in time. Now, I assume most of them are corrosive inside, so they're not direct contact with the lead anymore with the potable water?
Think, you know, it depends. I mean, I would, I would think the line, I don't want to say for sure, but the, from the curb stop to the home, it's, if it's an older home, it's probably fairly coated by now, but we don't know, you know, what's in the home. We put certain chemicals in our water to coat those lines, and that's what prevents the corrosion. We use corrosion chemicals, so, and as Todd mentioned, that's what happened in Flint. They switched sources, screwed everything up, right? So we're kind of looking at both, but our water distribution staff has a really good handle on that curb stop to the home line, and then it's in the homes too. So it's, it's a lot of public education too for those folks that, that may not be aware of what's going on.
So we're on the hook for 10%.
10%.
It's a great investment in the community. Mr. Veen moves approval, second by Weber. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Weber moves to adjourn. Mr. Veen seconds, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries, we're adjourned. We're going to take, yeah, we're going to take a 10, 12-minute break here to rearrange and whatnot. Come back.
Button. Just for anybody watching online, we will get started here shortly, just waiting for a few more people, so. Well, everybody got quiet, so I think it'd be a good time to start. Welcome, everybody, to the joint meeting, Grand Forks City Council, East Grand Forks City Council, and the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks MPO Executive Board, Monday, July 11th at 6:00 p.m. Item number one, if we get a roll call, do we got, is Marine going to do the roll call for us? Please, thank you.
We want to start with the roll call of the Grand Forks City Council. Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Cavani. Sandy.
Here.
And Veen.
Here.
And the East Grand Forks City Council, Vedder.
Here.
Helms.
Here.
Riappel.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Olsted.
Here.
Demers.
Present.
And Larson.
Here.
And then the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks MPO Executive Board, Ross. Strandell.
Here.
Demers.
Powers.
Here.
Grasser.
Here.
Vedder.
Here.
And Veen. All right, on to you.
Thank you. We're going to just start off, item two, welcoming opening remarks, so we're going to start off just remarks from Mayor Gander than myself, and then we'll be going on to a presentation from the MPO, so Mayor Gander, since you've, you're visiting over here and came in, we will give you the honors to start, sir, so please.
Hey, Broczenski, thanks for the hospitality over here. Nice to be here, nice to continue on in this process of moving this forward. It's a huge test of the trust that we have between us as two cities and as two councils. It's kind of a test, and I think so far we're passing that test, just keeping the process moving. So thanks to everybody around the table who's working on that, and certainly everybody here to, to join in and listen in. I'm optimistic about the building of two bridges in the south end of our community. The reason I'm optimistic about it is that it's to the mutual benefit of both sides of the river. We all will benefit when these two bridges are completed, and the benefit, and we'll hear more about that, I believe, is the, the benefit is roughly equal between the two communities. We're going to hear more in detail about the corridors that have been studied for a neighborhood bridge, inner-city bridge, with pros and cons of each, and one thing that keeps coming back over and over again is that it will relieve the congested, congested traffic along Belmont Reeves, and it'll relieve some congestion along Phoenix Elementary, and also even some intersections farther away out on Washington and Demers. We're going to hear good detail about all of that. For me, one of the most compelling statistics is 12,000 wasted miles a day by not having an additional neighborhood connection. 12,000 wasted miles a day, that is trips that are 12,000 miles longer if you add them all up, every 24-hour period, and that's what we're here to, to talk about, trying to rectify, along with certainly the discussion of Merrifield. Now, some would ask, what does Merrifield have to do with East Grand Forks? Why are we even involved in that conversation? I think that's a valid question. Certainly it'll give our farmers a chance to get their crops to market much easier and safer, not having to come through the downtown. They'll appreciate it, our pedestrians will appreciate it. It's affecting both of our downtowns. Second of all, we have even a greater assurance that these trucks and other commercial traffic will not be using our new neighborhood bridge whenever that's built, to, to make sure they use the bypass. We'll have it signed, it'll be rate limits and all of that, so I'm confident, talking to our Public Works and our police chief, that we will be able to keep trucks off, and neighborhood bridge will not be a concern. And finally, you know, we serve a lot of the folks, even on the East Grand Forks side, a lot of agricultural businesses over there, and we have Simplot, the soil grower, and we have the Hefty Seed, and of course we have American Crystal and other agricultural businesses over there that need to get their products back and forth, and certainly the Merrifield Bridge is going to be huge in helping out with that. So it challenges us to do what is for the greater good. I know it's, it's really tempting, and we'll have some really valid, strong resistance, let's say along 32nd. It's strong and it's valid resistance, and if we can all step back and really consider then what's for the greater good, and then even as we do that, to be mindful and considerate, and, and working toward building in the features that will mitigate or minimize that impact along whatever corridor is the neighborhood bridge, whether it is 32nd or whether it ends up to be Elks, those probably are the, the final two that are in play. Let's really be mindful of those concerns, let's listen to everyone and do everything we can to mitigate those. I do want to take just a moment and touch on the land purchase that we made. I know it caused some stir with our friends over in Grand Forks, feeling like the cart got ahead of the horse on that, but I do want to just, just frame that to what really happened there. We were going about our business, and sure enough, an auction came along where that land became available. We took a look and said, you know what, if we can buy that at a market rates for farmland, even though farmland is very expensive in the valley, it'll be very affordable compared to having to take that property from someone else later on who's using it for another purpose. From the land that we bought, for example, some of the land we bought for our levy cost 10 times that amount per acre, and so we saved the taxpayers 90% on a purchase of, of a parcel of land. It will hold value. You know, basically, we took cash from here and put it over there in an asset, and if we have to turn around and resell that at market in one year, five years, 10 years, so be it. We have not lost a dime. We're now looking to make a big profit on it, and in fact, if that ends up to be the corridor at 32nd, which we're going to discuss and decide here in the coming days, weeks, months, years, all we need is, we need just the right-of-way for the road and the bridge, and the rest will be sold back. We don't care to develop it as commercial property or any residential or anything else. So that was the, the story behind how we ended up purchasing that land, wanted to be good stewards of the people's money, be responsible with it, and we know fully well, again, if another corridor is chosen, then we can step back, maybe even do a land swap for that matter. We now have an asset that's worthwhile right in the area. So that would be the background on the land purchase. Please know it wasn't a, wasn't a shot across the bow to say we're going ahead with this no matter what. This really is, hopefully, a strategic move for us to be able to get this done as affordable as we can when the time comes. And so we know you all have other infrastructure priorities. You have your interchange, you have lots of other, other priorities for infrastructure. This one happens to be one of our highest priorities for infrastructure, and for that reason, we're very happy to take the lead and get it going, and we'll coordinate with the consultant that's brought in, keeping you in the loop every step of the way. It's, again, a two-way street all the way through this thing until the point of completion. And again, if you need for us to, to take the lead on this one project and then work in your, in your cooperation real closely, happy to do that. So thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Gander. First, I just want to say it's great to have both city councils, I don't know when the last time that's happened, so welcome, certainly welcome, our MPO Director, Ms. Halford. We lost her at the city, but it's great to have you back here tonight. Our sister cities have a long history, obviously, of, of working together. Even recently, as the Springs flood, we communicated a lot, shared resources and communicated and coordinated, and I have no doubt that partnership will continue long into the future. You did touch on it, you know, normally we are fully aligned in priorities, but in this case, our priorities are different, at least slightly different. We've got legislatively, we've prioritized funding with the NDOT. I mean, there's funding available, we've prioritized two, two main arteries. The main thing is the interstate and interchange at 47th, and largely that was to relieve traffic at 32nd, so I think it's really difficult for us to go ask for funding that's going to relieve traffic, only in the same swath, ask for funding that's going to potentially bring bypass traffic through there. Our other main priority is the underpass on 42nd. That train underpass, that's been really decades in the making, and thousands upon thousands of hours of productivity are, are lost there in the city every week by, by people waiting for the trains to go there. Merrifield Bridge, I'm glad you brought that up, that'd be a high bridge, I think that needs to be the priority, along with an interstate interchange on I-29, that's a, something the county is really looking for as part of their support on it. Obviously, like you mentioned, it's, it's going to relieve some of that inner-city truck traffic. It'll be more efficient for the farmers, and it'll be safer. I think the other point, and to keep us from getting into the trouble that we're in now, is getting a bridge built that's in a lightly developed area. It's not an area like, like we have with the inner-city bridge where it's already developed and we run into, you know, all the difficulties of schools and neighborhoods that are established for a really long time. I guess one last item to, to consider, and actually, you know, I was talking with Mark Schill today, just at how rare this is. This hasn't been done in the state of North Dakota. The state of North Dakota has not connected a bridge to another state in decades. I think the Minnesota Department of Transportation has done it maybe once down in St. Croix in the last few decades, so anybody working for the NDOT or the MNDOT, they've never done it before. This is a new playbook that needs to be created. I think getting through this at Merrifield Road is a great way to create that playbook and have something to go off into the future, but my belief is that's the great place to start for the reasons that I've listed, but I look forward to the discussion here tonight. And with that, I want to open it up to MPO Executive Director Stephanie Halford. Congratulations on your new position, and then Mark Schill, I think you're going to help out with Stephanie as well, so please proceed.
All right, don't worry, this is only eight to slides long, about 30 minutes. That was a joke. Thanks for the courtesy, love. All right, good evening, everyone, and my name is Stephanie Halford. I'm the new appointed executive director of the MPO. I've been asked to give kind of an overview of the bridge studies, but I've also kind of put in a little bit of information from others, other studies we recently have done, so it kind of gives you a more of a well-rounded view of what we're looking at. So this conversation. of what we're looking at. So, this conversation, a long history in our community, where do we put a bridge over the river and connect our community? So, the most recent, the Future Bridge Traffic Impact Study, the purpose of this was to look at improved mobility and connecting our two cities, reducing congestion on the Point Bridge, and connecting roadways while providing a more direct connection between the two cities. So, there are actually six bridges that connect Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. We have one railroad bridge, two pedestrian-only bridges, and there's actually three bridges that can only be used for vehicle traffic. You can see where these are located, and also where, when they got built. And I didn't label the pedestrian bridge, but it's about right here, and then you have another one to the north right here, and those were done in 2001. So, the bridge study looked at a couple different alternatives, the no-brIDGE option, Elks Drive Bridge Location, and the 32nd Avenue Bridge Corridor. So, when we look at the Elks Drive and 32nd Avenue options, precisely where they're located was never exactly decided, and for either location, some of the kind of the design features that it would have is two travel lanes, sign for no trucks, bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. It would have greenway access that would go under the bridge like we have with our other bridges in the community, and the high point would be about three feet if you're looking from the Grand Forks side. It would also have a wall, flood wall closure system, as well as I kind of put a little graph of, and I'll show this a couple different times of, depending on which option you go with, there's different costs associated with it. So, this was the study area that was looked at, different corridors and different intersections of the city, and you can see those that are highlighted on the map right there. As well as a committee was formed. A key part of the study was the stakeholders, the public involvement process. The At-Hot Committee for Study provided a well-balanced representation of the community. With any study that is done, having public involvement and well-rounded community committee is key. We're not all experts in everything, and we all use the community in different ways, so coming together makes for a good study. So, during the study process, there were surveys that went out. We found that 73% of our communities said yes to an inner-city bridge. That's looking at New Bridge at 32nd said 56%, 17 for Elks Drive. They were also asked, how well do you feel each alternative meets the community's needs? So, they thought, and at first glance, it's kind of hard to read. You think red is bad, but actually, this is saying this doesn't meet not well for a New Bridge, and then the blue is saying that it meets it very well. So, this is where we're sitting now, and how well our community is handling our traffic volumes. Keep in mind, this is only looking at the corridors that the study highlighted, the handful of intersections, and we all know we're seeing capacity issues in other parts of our community. Grand Forks has been looking into some capacity issues for a while, and have identified a few projects they think will help. The 42nd Street Grade Separation, which was talked about earlier, oh, sorry, my little sign went over that. I-29 Interchange of 47th Avenue, which is right here, the inner-city bridge, and the Merrifield Bridge, and the interchange. So, as our community grows, you can see not far into the future, we'll see increased congestion on our roadways. Congestion is not one part of the city, but one side of the river's problem, but system-wide. This shows that we're projected to see seven years from now. If we choose a no-inner-city bridge option, this is what we'll see increase to. Now, we're looking at what traffic congestion will look like on these corridors by 2045. Now, we can see how it changes when you add a bridge on Elks Drive, this is seven years from now, and you can see the added traffic that gets highlighted along between Elks and 32nd. This is what it would look like in 2045. So, you see the increased traffic between 24th and Elks. And I guess I want to point out, even though these streets and intersections have been studied, it's not, all the streets haven't been highlighted. So, there's still traffic can flow through these neighborhoods, as we see traffic goes from along Belmont instead of going over to Washington. So, traffic can, people will find the shortest route possible. Now, we're looking at 32nd Avenue traffic volume change, and we had a bridge added to 32nd. So, you see that increased traffic along 32nd right there. 2045, you can see how it shifts and increases. But no matter what, if you put a new bridge in or not, traffic is gonna increase. Our population is gonna increase. So, you're gonna see these get darker, and traffic's gonna get higher, no matter what. The 2050 population projection has numerous, hold on, sorry. Our community is growing. Grand Forks is projected to see a population of 96,326 by 2050. East Grand Forks is projected to grow 11,190 by 2050. That's 37,797 additional people in our community. So, we gotta ask ourselves, where will these people work? Where will these people live? And how will they navigate our road system? This is projected for 2045, where we'll see these corridors and these intersections reach capacity level. The 2050 population projection has numerous ramifications for planning. The physical growth, such as land consumption, you can see in the 2050 map. So, this is a Grand Forks and East Grand Forks Land Use Plan map combined together. In turn, the Land Use Plan sets the stage for the MPO to update its long-range transportation plan. Population projections look into the future of households and employment. These are just some of the things that looked at to identify future roadway capacity. Given these ripple effects, it's important to update your plans, and the Land Use Plan shows us what kind of land and how much of it we need to accommodate this growth. So, you can see in the map that Grand Forks is projected to reach Merrifield by 2050. That is accommodate the population for housing and jobs. So, without a new bridge, today's congestion will get worse, in particular on Washington Street, Demers Avenue, and near the Point Bridge. With or without a new bridge, traffic volumes will continue to grow. Without a new bridge, growth will be out of balance in the northern parts of the city. And again, this is just another projection of increased traffic, and the numbers are all over there. So, again, going back, with a new bridge at Elks Drive, congestion will be reduced on Washington Street, if this is if you went this option. Traffic would be better balanced on the system, and again, this shows what the bridge, oh, did I skip a slide? I guess not. So, not only would you have to update the corridors if you put a new bridge in, but intersections would also have to be updated, even putting in another bridge. Oh, I jumped ahead, sorry. So, this is Elks Drive, daily vehicles increasing, and this is what I was talking about. Here we go. So, this is increasing the corridors, the volume, as well as the intersections that would have to be updated. So, it's not just on Grand Forks side, but you'd see it on the east side as well, that would have to go up, and then the estimated cost. 32nd Avenue Bridge, the increased traffic. And then, as well as the corridors and the intersections that you would have to update to, to accommodate the bridge. Safe access to schools for children and family is a priority. There are six schools in the Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. Well, there's six schools in Grand Forks and two in East Grand Forks in the study area. See, they're here, to the north, as you go south. New bridge in either location would better balance traffic near these schools. No matter what option you go with, a school will be affected, even doing nothing and no-bridge option. Safety and traffic calming features near schools would need to be included with the bridge design, but either way, as a community grows, we're already seeing this issue, and design features at schools need to be looked at. Also wanted to touch on Merrifield a little bit. So, this is, we're looking more south to the city. This is the east-west county highway, about six miles from the core, and due to its location, it's been looked at as an interest for a bypass around the community. In the past, three alternatives have been looked at. Alternative one, you can see a green, alternative in blue, and alternative three in orange, just a couple different alignments. And with this, it kind of goes along with, you're basically saying no inner-city bridge, no bridge for inside the city. You would have those same capacity issues and increased strain on your corridors and intersections that would need to be looked at. Merrifield Bridge would need an interchange. These are approximate locations. And I guess, just a few things to think about, whoops. Oh, it's touchscreen. Again, our community is growing, and it's gonna continue to grow. Either Elks Bridge or 32nd Bridge will help with that inner-city traffic. Merrifield Bridge will help with that regional truck traffic. School safety for all schools would be part of either city bridge option, but for anything to move forward, we need to come together. And that is my 80-slide presentation.
Thank you, Stephanie. Well, before we turn it over to Mark, I just gotta make a comment. We got two new council members that get to throw in right in the fire between the cornmill project and this, so thank you for willing to do it. Appreciate it. Mr. Schill.
Thanks, Mayor. Working with the MPO, the two cities, they're asking to come and help moderate the remainder of the discussion tonight. And so, what we hope to accomplish is, these are things up on the board here. One is a quick update from East Grand Forks on the RFP process they put out to look at a consultant to help define, as Mayor Bocinski alluded to, there is no process, because this hasn't been done before in either state. And then, secondly, talk about two key questions. One, as elected leaders and members of the MPO Board, what are you weighing as you move forward? What factors are you considering? How are you looking to make this decision? And what are the criteria when you look at the two potential inner-city sites, the Merrifield Bridge, or an option of not building a bridge is also a decision, right?
And then, thirdly, what questions are left to answer? Anything that you need to know that hasn't been studied, even if it has been studied, could it be better articulated? What information is left out there to collect that could help you move this issue forward? So, we'll start with Mr. David Murphy. He's the City Administrator for the East Grand Forks, City of East Grand Forks.
Thank you. Again, my name is David Murphy. I'm the City Administrator here for the City of East Grand Forks, and I'll try to make this brief here as well. There's what I've been asked to speak about tonight, is to bring everybody here up to speed as far as what we are looking at in the RFP process, what we're looking at for a consultant, and what we hope to gain out of it, and more importantly, why we decided to look at hiring a consultant for this. So, as Mayor Bocinski alleged, said before, this has not been done anytime in recent memory of anybody on either side, either North Dakota, Minnesota, or Minnesota and Wisconsin. He did mention the St. Croix Bridge over there in Stillwater, and it's, that's a very good example, is it's something that's somewhat similar, but it's still different enough that they, it's not a, it's not something that we can use as a template for it. It was, it's a new bridge between Minnesota and Wisconsin, however, it was replacing a bridge in a new location. So, they did, they did have some of the, but again, it was not really an apples-to-apples, and so unfortunately, we were not able to take real, any real guidance from it. So, with that being said, we wanted to move this forward as far as, what I had said to the councils, I guess, we really don't know what we don't know, because there isn't a process for this. And I spoke to the, my counterparts in North Dakota, Wisconsin, and here in Minnesota with the DOTs there. What I found is that, yeah, if you're going to replace a bridge, refurbish a bridge, rehab a bridge, they have a very, very definite checklist, because it happens quite a bit. They do it all the time. And there's a very set procedure for that. However, for putting a new bridge in a new location, as far as I can tell, probably the last time that that was done was in 1963 and 1964 with the Kennedy Bridge between the two cities here, and as far as I can tell, one has not been done since then. So, with that being said, we wanted to look at, what do we do? I'm gonna put the mayor on the spot here, because one of the things that Mayor Gander had said previously is, what he doesn't want to see is, 20 years from now, whoever's sitting in these seats, that they're gonna look back and say that we should have done something, or we should have at least tried to move the ball forward. So, with that being said, we looked at trying to find out what do we need to do. So, we worked with our engineers, kind of got an idea of what the general items would need to be, and with that, the main one would be obviously selecting the corridor for the bridge, but for the process, for the design, we need to get an environmental process. We would need to have a geotechnical investigation and reporting. We'd have to have a hydraulic report. There'd be permitting with the Army Corps of Engineers, the DNR, Watersheds, MnDOT, North Dakota DOT, Polk, Grand Forks Counties, et cetera. Then, there would have to be the preliminary, preliminary bridge approach plans, and then a final bridge and approach plans to be designed. There's, so that's quite a few steps between here and there, in ones that, again, there is not a template or precedent that we can follow to do that. So, due to that, we went, I brought forward to the council the idea of going out for a proposal from consultants who would be able to research this for us and help guide us through this process, since it is, we're gonna be kind of almost making it up as we go. So, we started that back in March. We put together a preliminary RFP. I sent it to our counterparts over here in Grand Forks for their review, to get any comments from them. We actually got some pretty good comments from them, and we also, so once we got that, then I sent it out to potential consultants for what's called a peer review, to see if there's something that maybe we forgot about, something that they would know that we didn't, that we included in there, so we can get the most complete proposal that we could. So, once I got those back, put that together, and we gave that to our counterparts in Grand Forks as well, staff anyways, for their review, and brought it back to the City Council, and the council authorized us to go for RFPs. That closed then at the end of June, June 30th, so we received three proposals. So, what I'm gonna be hoping to get here in the near future from Grand Forks is, I would like to see, I would like to see a selection committee with some, with input from Grand Forks as well. This is how I envision the selection committee to bring back. I would see it as one East Grand Forks Council member. We have tentatively identified Councilmember Brian Larson as our rep for there, and one Grand Forks City Council member, to be determined, one East Grand Forks staff member, which would be myself, and one Grand Forks staff member, which would be, to be determined, and then an MPO staff member. Tentatively, we would have Stephanie do that as well. So, with that, that would be the committee that would review the proposals, do a follow-up information, a follow-up information gathering, interviews of the consultants, and then hopefully make a decision on a recommendation to both city councils for hiring a consultant to help us through this process. Again, this is being led by the City of East Grand Forks. We would certainly want the input and participation of Grand Forks. We would certainly want the input and participation of Grand Forks, whether that, again, with the representation and potentially with maybe helping to pay for a part of it. But with that, that is where we are looking at trying to get the, from the consultants. And the, yeah, that's why we looked at it and what we're hoping to get out of it, and I will certainly take in questions that we may have from any of our counterparts on Grand Forks, or, otherwise, that is, that is my report. Thank you.
Any ideas on what that funding split would look like?
No, I guess, hope, I would, I would hope it would be 50/50. That's what we would request, but certainly it's up to the Grand Forks as well.
You're in a bit of a tough negotiating spot because it sounds like you're doing it anyway.
That is true.
All right. I guess I'd open up any comments on Grand Forks side this time. Dana, nothing?
Thanks, Mr. Murphy. So ultimately, this is about defining the process, this project, and you're looking for, one, input from Grand Forks on selecting this vendor and who will carry this work forward. And then secondly, I assume there will be a steering committee or some other mechanism so that both cities and anyone else, the key stakeholders, can participate in helping steer what happens with that project going forward. So, Mr. Gander, yes?
I think, you know, I hear the preference to move on 47th, or excuse me, on Maryfield, and yet, if we go through this at all, we're going to bring all this knowledge, institutional knowledge, right into our two city councils, and it'd be beneficial. I mean, if we're creating a roadmap to do a bridge between two states, looking at funding, looking at, you know, all the hurdles to cross, the, the knowledge that we gain is going to be relevant for both bridges. Absolutely, it would. Yep.
Right. So that process would likely apply for any bridge that was built, regardless of the location. So the last item on the agenda here-
Sorry, Mr. Schill, I do, I actually do have one question. Is that, do you already have that document done? Is the RFP done and, and out yet, or?
Yes, the RFP has been put out, and we have received proposals from three different consultants.
So did you get any input on that at all from anyone in Grand Forks?
Yes.
They sent it to administrative staff.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think one of the concerns on the RFP that I've heard feedback on is it mentions specifically 32nd Avenue South and doesn't note, but I think who we hire, we should, it should be broad enough that we would look at all inner, or I would say at least the two inner-city locations, and that, I think that was not intended just to be 32nd. It was really intended, if we're going to do an inner-city bridge, hire a consultant that can provide us a roadmap from A to Z. However, my, I suspect we're only going to scope a certain level of service, so we may only contract with a certain, like, Phase 1 as part of the agreement, and Phase 1 will get us so far, and then we come back with further reports to city council, and then decide how much further we want to go from there. And that'll be part of the negotiation too, that I don't think we want to do the whole thing all at once. We want to, we want to do enough so that we find out more and then determine how we want to further move forward. And I think what Mr. Murphy and East Grand Forks are asking for is participation from Grand Forks and the selection of the consultant, ultimately helping to fund this, the, whatever the scope of services that will be provided, and those would all be city council, you know, led decisions. And so this is kind of the preamble to, get one of you, have a council president, Sante's, you know, recommend somebody for appointment, and then I think really makes sense probably is like Algrass or our city engineer to be the staff member to help shepherd it on our side too.
So that solicitation process has closed. Are you ready to make a decision to select a vendor and start moving forward here?
Well, the, the, the time for submitting proposals has closed. We have not, we have not taken any formal action to review the proposals yet. And one thing I say, I guess, as far as with it specifically referencing 32nd, I guess there's nothing more nefarious in that other than that's, was the, the preferred location in that study. That was the number one location on that, so that's, I guess that's why it was in there. There wasn't any, for nefarious reasons or whatever.
Ultimately, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Gander, this project is about defining the process, and it, it won't include selecting a location as part of this consulting project. It's really about understanding what steps do we need to take to build a bridge anywhere? Is that correct?
I guess I'd, I'd say it's anywhere, and if, the more we can start to define corridors, Mayor Bochensky doodled a note to me that, that this could even be inclusive of Maryfield, right? If we wanted to go to that extent and really create that roadmap for inner-city bridges, we could identify the inner-city bridges and the bypass bridge and, and carry on that conversation and just create that roadmap. I should say as well, you know, if someone said our bargaining position is weakened by the fact that we've already gotten to this point, we haven't committed any money. And I know there are some on the council who say, we won't commit any money unless we can go in 50/50 with you all. I know there's that sentiment on the council. I don't know if it's the prevailing sentiment, but I know there are those who feel that way, that this only goes forward if we are 50/50 with our friends across the river. It's got to be a team effort or we don't go. It's pretty silly, you know, it's like you say, you can't build half a bridge, right? It's a bridge going all the way or it's not going at all. And so we would want to frame even this, this scope of work to where it's agreeable to you all, so we, we really can go forward as a team altogether. Thanks.
Great. Any further comments specific to just this RFP process and proposal?
Sure. You, you don't have bids yet, but we're talking 50/50. What, do you have an estimate on?
No, we do not, and that's a very good question. And there's a, the answer to that is, because this is such an unknown, the thought process for going out for the proposals was that what we got back, when we review it and we make a recommendation to, to the councils, we're not exactly certain what's all going to be included in the first part of it, the first phase. It could, you know, it could be phased, it could be a couple of different options that we could go through. So with that being said, I did not have them put in an actual proposal for a dollar amount, meaning, because we didn't really know how in-depth this was going to be at this point. So what we were hoping to do is we want to select the consultants based on their ability to deliver, their ability to work through this process, and be, and what the scope of the project we're, we're really going to be doing, meaning, yeah, are we looking at potentially all three? Are we looking more kind of at one, based on what that would be? Then we could get, at that point, once we have selected who we think would be the best to deliver, we will negotiate the, the fee on that based on what their, their per-hour rates are and what would they anticipate, what the, what the, the time commitment would be for those processes that, in those duties that we would be engaging them to do. So that's a long way to say that I don't have that answer right now. It's something that we would be, because, because we're right at the beginning of the process.
It's closer to a request for qualifications type of process where you're looking at selecting a vendor, then negotiating the scope as to what the work will be and the cost as part of that. So the costs will depend on the tasks negotiated. Mr. Bean?
Trying to get, excuse me, understand the process again. Would, is, would the NPO, which we already have that works between us with cities and counties, be a part of the process as you're moving forward? Are you trying to create a new process separate from the NPO?
No, I would anticipate the NPO, and it would be my hope that the NPO would be actively engaged in this in every part of the process. Where I would see the, this is no, this is nothing to say bad against the NPO, however, like we've found here is that they, nobody has any experience with this, and I just don't know that it would be fair to, to put all of this into the NPO's lab, you know, to try to, to work through this. So, but I would see them, I would see them involved in every aspect of this.
Yeah. So they would go through, I mean, that would be a professional assistant to the processes, what you're talking about. And they would go back and look at the existing 2045 land use plan, all of that information that we have, because there's a lot of it out there that should be utilized, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel either.
Yep. The review of the existing documentation was the, was the very first task listed in the, in our request.
Thank you.
And so correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Halford, though, that part of this is, this is a local bridge, and it's a local decision, and so for instance, this is not running across a state highway, for instance. So that changes part of the process, how it's funded and all these things, and it makes it become more of a local decision, as it would be closer to if, if you were to make an upgrade to Belmont Road, or to Bigland Road, or some other smaller, local-only street. It's more akin to that process than it is, say, an interchange, right? That includes all of the federal requirements and funding and all those things. And so that's partly why the City of East Grand Forks has said, we're willing to at least step up and start walking the process forward.
That is very accurate description.
Ms. Halford?
Sit down. Um, yes, it would have to be city-led. It doesn't come from a DOT, it won't be a DOT bridge, so a city does have to come forward and be the leader, but it's definitely, both cities have to come to the table.
But there's, there's federal funding for this local decision?
Yes. Definitely the DOT would still be involved, and I would hope to be involved too, but again, it's, it's like a local street.
Great.
Mr. Ford's here for the county. I know County Commissioner Ross, you're also here, along with Mr. Strandell and, and Mr. Powers too. But Mr. Ford shared there was a meeting recently with Polk County and discussing the Maryfield Road, so I asked Tom to be here and kind of give us an update, and we were also, Tom and I, in our respective cities and counties, were part of a, a meeting with the North Dakota DOT also, and there's been some follow-up regarding Maryford Road, and, and so I encourage Tom to come here and if he'd share some words on what he talked about with his counterparts.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, happy to. So first of all, thanks to Mayor Bochensky and Mayor Gander for the invitation and, and allowing us to participate today. As Mr. Phelan indicated, we attended a, a brief meeting with North Dakota DOT a couple weeks ago, and that was really led by the Chamber of Grand Forks, East Grand Forks. Really, the, the point of it was to take a look at the federal funding opportunities and how they could relate to the many different infrastructure projects that the cities and the counties have been examining and looking at. After that meeting with NDOT, I did reach out to my counterpart in Polk County and Commissioner Strandell. I'm not, not speaking for Polk County tonight, but just, you know, but, but I did have a meeting. It involved myself and Mr. West, the county, Grand Forks County engineer, and then it was Chuck Whiting, and the, the Polk County Highway engineer as well. And the, the last time I had, really had a good conversation with Polk County leadership regarding Maryfield Bridge, more of their priorities seemed to be around Nealsville. So after that meeting with NDOT, I wanted to just reach back out to Polk County leadership and, and see where they're at. The long and short of it is that I gave a recap to Polk County leadership, Mr. Whiting, and, and give a recap of that North Dakota DOT meeting and some of the discussions and do-outs from that. And posed the question, if Grand Forks County was to get serious about a Maryfield Bridge, you know, where would that fall under Polk County? A good conversation is essentially from, from Polk County staff. They, they would work with Grand Forks County, they would cooperate with Grand Forks County and whatever that might look like, and work with us to get, get the ball started. There would be a lot of prep work, obviously, to start such a process, and obviously, from, from a Polk County standpoint, and I, I think from a Grand Forks County standpoint, we would agree that any Maryfield Bridge crossing discussions that would heat up would also have to involve, obviously, an interchange on that I-29 Maryfield Bridge point. So pleasantly surprised at how the discussion went. It was a very positive discussion, and we did discuss, myself and Mr. Whiting, kind of what some of those first steps would be, whether it's cost sharing, whether it's where prioritizes on infrastructure needs for Polk County. So there would be cooperation between the two counties if this was, if this was to start going down, down the path of a Maryfield Bridge crossing, and, and obviously, as Mayor Bochensky indicated, we'd, we'd also like to see that be a high bridge at Maryfield. So it really starts with some seed money, and where does that come from? What is the cost share? I think some of the next steps, if this is a path we want to go down, myself and Mr. West have had some internal discussions about how we present this to the, to the Grand Forks County Commission, giving a recap of where that meeting with Polk County Administration led and what some of those next steps were, and, and if this is something we indeed, as a county of Grand Forks, want us lead. But I think some of those next steps would be having, having greater discussions with Mr. Phelan and, and City, Grand Forks City leadership to see what that looks like. We, we do realize the City of Grand Forks, and East Grand Forks have infrastructure priorities, and from a Grand Forks County standpoint, we have our own. If you haven't heard, we're, we're looking to build a new juvenile detention center. We have to add under a correctional center. We have other infrastructure needs, and, and quite frankly, I think this discussion for Grand Forks County can become much more realistic if the county's home rule charter pursuit can be successful. I think that becomes much more real conversation. So I think the next steps would be for County, Grand Forks County, and Grand Forks City leadership to get together and see where this falls on our prioritization list, cost funding, working together through legislative sessions, but really just, really beginning the communication process and getting that started.
So my takeaway, Mr. Ford, is two things. One, the early discussions have started between the two county governments about a bridge at Maryfield, and both are at least open to it. And then secondly, to start to really move forward, assuming everyone agrees, is that there'd be, need to be some considerable support from the two cities.
Yeah, that, that's correct. We definitely don't want to derail any, any projects that the two cities have already started and have gone quite a ways down the path. But like I said, if, if we all get together and communicate and this winds up being the priority, I think we have a much greater chance of success.
So and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Halford, that the recent traffic modeling shows that while the Maryfield Bridge will eliminate some considerable truck traffic and commercial traffic, it doesn't change the traffic, say, on Belmont or Washington or Bigland Road or some of the East Grand Forks neighborhoods too much? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Weber?
Regardless of specific priorities, this is clearly a matter of great enough importance that it would be unfortunate if we couldn't come together to agree on us cooperating on, on getting more information. In fact, this is of sufficient importance to our two communities and our two counties that maybe we could even look to our counties for, for some support in, in this process. I don't know if, if this is a good time or if it's in the next section, but I had some questions about traffic counts. Thanks for the, the nice concise presentation, but it went a little quick for me. Is this an all right time for me to ask a, a traffic count question?
We can ask. We may not have the exact answers, but it's likely that some of that analysis has been done. So knowing what types of traffic information are important to you would be helpful.
I think it's fairly specific. We've heard, and I anticipate we'll hear more, about the increase to traffic on 32nd. But what I was taking from, from your presentation is that no bridge, Elk Bridge, or, or 32nd, there will be significant increase, there will be increase to, to traffic on 32nd with all three options. But that there is some, that, that a new bridge helps with that to, to some degree. What, can you tell us the difference between those three options in terms of the amount of traffic on 32nd in, in seven years and in, in 2045?
Certainly. Can't give you exact numbers, but basically with the no bridge option, it's going to keep a lot of the traffic to the north, and then it's going to funnel down through Washington, and even, we've seen it already through some of the neighborhoods. People are going to drive whatever the quickest way is, or the shortest distance, or whatever is going to be the quickest. So it's going to go along Washington and then along 32nd or wherever they're heading to. So the bridges that feed that currently are the Point Bridge, the Sohrle, and the Kennedy, depending which way you want to go and start your commute, or whatever destination to A and B you're going. If you do an Elks drive one, from Elks to 32nd, you're going to see that increased traffic. We've only highlighted along Belmont as a, a section of street that we looked at and studied, but we don't know, it didn't go into the study of how much that traffic would go into the neighborhoods. Because when you get off Elks, depending where you locate that, it could tee into where Belmont is. It could hit to where about 17th is. It's, there hasn't been an exact location that has been identified, but kind of around there, depending where that hits, you're going to have to put a light there, and then traffic would go south. Because if people are trying to come from one side of the river to the other, if you're going somewhere from 17th north, you're probably going to use one that downtown or the Kennedy Bridge. If you're going to go somewhere, commute somewhere 17th and south, you would probably use that new Elks Bridge, and then depending where you're going, either go through the neighborhood or go along Belmont, and then along 32nd to the shopping or to a restaurant. If you put a bridge at 32nd, that's just going to go along 32nd Corridor, and again, depending on where someone wants to go from one side of the river to the other, is what bridge you're going to take. is what bridge you're going to take. And it probably won't feed into, I guess if they want to go somewhere between 32nd and 17th, they might take, go along Belmont instead of. But again, it's just there's so many different ways it can go. But that's generally how the traffic would go.
And so those numbers are, though, in the study, right?
Yes, yes.
Looking at it, and one of the things they did too is segment different roads. So in that case, they looked at, I think it was Washington to Cherry as one segment and modeled that, and then Cherry to Belmont and modeled that, as well as modeled several of those intersections to say, okay, what's the traffic going to look like there? And if it does, how will we have to change those in the future? Will we have to do construction? Will we have to add a signal? What does it look like with a stop sign versus a signal? Those types of things. And so, and I'm not a traffic engineer, there's really two kinds of analysis in there. It's one, what they call a level of service, which is A, B, C, D, E, F, right? And then they have the actual numbers in there as well. And so it looks at no bridge numbers, Elks numbers, 32nd numbers. And so include, looking at that sort of H-shaped look on the Grand Forks side, you know, as Ms. Hallford alluded to, you can't model every street. You'd have a computer server on fire somewhere, right? That wouldn't work. So they had to pick the major roads. But as well as Washington, if I'm correct, that's really the major impact in Grand Forks, right? Is currently Washington between Demers and 24th is a level D. If you do nothing, it becomes a level E at 2030 and a level F at 2045, right? And same is somewhat true for Demers. And so some of the pain point that Grand Forks will feel will likely be increased traffic and then the potential to address that, you know, whether there needs to be some changes made there with infrastructure or to live with that congestion.
And regardless of the three options, no bridge, Elks or 32nd, we're going to have increased traffic and we need to do some mitigation to create a greater pedestrian and student safety in all those neighborhoods, right? But the Elks and no bridge are going to disperse it through all of those neighborhoods. 32nd is going to direct and anticipate direct more of it right along that 32nd Corridor. So even if I'm a few blocks off of 32nd, especially to the north of 32nd, I'm likely to be impacted by no bridge or Elks to a greater degree than if there's a 32nd. Thanks.
So let's take a step back for a second. Mr. Weber, you mentioned, one, the traffic, right, as one of the things you're thinking about. Two, you mentioned safety as another. The study, the recent study, I believe, does look at crashes as well and projects some of those crashes. The current problem areas, I believe, are much of Washington between 24th and Demers on the Grand Forks side. And then one of the intersections in East Grand Forks on Bigland Road was already above what they say is the 1.0 critical type of level where, and I think half or more were rear end collisions, which were attributable to some extent to traffic. So I'd like to hear at least, maybe starting with the Grand Forks side, are there other factors you're considering? Mr. Weber mentioned the traffic and the safety. Any other thought?
Well, I mentioned traffic and safety around 32nd and the neighborhoods north of there. But clearly, we're headed towards an F rating along Fourth Avenue South very, very soon. We're already at D or E, is that correct?
Don't remember off the top of my head, but it's already pretty high. Yep.
Thanks.
Any others from the Grand Forks side? Mr. Sandy, you're leaning. Is that a signal?
I'm wondering if anyone else has any thoughts or...
Yeah, Ms. Solsky, sure. Could you turn on your microphone?
Oh, okay. I guess I'd like to know how you guys came up with the population, the projection with the population. Because in 2020, we had about 49,000 people, and now we have 56,000 people in Grand Forks. And so that's only up 7,000 people. So you're anticipating that the population will grow 56%?
So, Ms. Hallford, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe both of those numbers, both East Grand Forks and Grand Forks have updated their land use plans. And those land use plans include an estimate of population growth, correct? And that's where those numbers in your slides came from?
Yep. That was one of the tasks that the consultants did, as well as looked at how much housing plan you need to dedicate for housing and for jobs, too.
Right. So that land use map you showed, Ms. Hallford, with the different colors, they pick a growth number, agree on it and say, okay, if that growth is going to happen, how much land do we need and what type of land? And they just look at a basic density calculation and say, well, if it's up to another 7,000, right, how much space do we need for those folks? And then they take that data, correct, and plug it into the traffic modeling and start to look at it and say, okay, now what happens to all of our roads if we assume this occurring? Mr. Quamie has joined us, a council member from Grand Forks. And so those are, maybe the processes were a little different from each land use plan, and that may have been before your time, Ms. Hallford, but that's where that comes from is an estimate of, and I think they look at the state of the economy and the demographics. And, you know, and some of it is partially, to go up to 2050, it is a guess to some extent. Mr. Sandy?
Yeah, I've got a question. How is it, how has East Grand Forks determined its land use? And I realize that you go through the process, the same process that we do, but why did you decide that southeast Grand Forks is the way to grow rather than north towards your beautiful golf course?
Mr. Gander?
I can take a poke at that. There is natural growth going south. We have a good number of lots for sale on the north end even right now. We have an inventory of lots that are ready to be built upon, and those have been selling a bit more slowly than our southerly lots have been. It's a natural preference of the consumer at this time, a little more skewed to the south end. We're selling lots pretty nicely around the golf course. It's going very well. But I'd say, you know, just looking at the geographic growth to the south, it's two or three to one, south to north, just seeing customer preference. So I can't answer why. We do have platted lots up to the north, and they're ready to go. So come on in, and I think they're pretty affordable with no specials. It's a little shameless plug.
To a certain degree, you drive development yourselves through your land use plan. You could drive development to the north.
Well, you know, you can go contrary to the preference of your consumer, but it doesn't go well. You're going to stifle the growth of your community if you try to drive growth where it doesn't naturally want to go.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ultimately, Mayor, some of that is up to the particular landowner and what they decide to develop, correct? Other than making it illegal to do something, it may be tough to steer it too much, right? Yeah.
Sure, but just again, if you, if you, for example, built a bridge on 23rd Street Northwest, put it right through the golf course over to 27th Avenue North, which we are redoing, by the way, very shortly, and making it a major arterial, it's really easy, it's a really easy commute from the north end of East Grand Forks and might make those lots more affordable.
Where do they want to go on the north end of Grand Forks? There are no natural connections that...
Ultimately, it would. It would connect to Washington, it would connect to 42nd, it would connect to the interstate.
But already, it's not, there's not a north destination for them in Grand Forks. There is a south destination.
Ultimately, they're going to drive wherever they need to drive. And so if there were a bridge on the north side of East Grand Forks, for example, and people developed around there, they would drive the easiest way to get wherever they want to go.
Do you see, though, that it's not redundant north and south? The trip originates to the north, it terminates in the south, it's not redundant. If there was a north destination, a big shopping center, a big employer that they're going to, that would be redundant traffic north to north. This is north to south. It's not redundant.
So ultimately, Mr. Gander, it's market forces.
It's market forces.
Driving the development patterns.
But that's East Grand Forks, market forces. That's East Grand Forks, market forces.
And by every assessment ever made, the neighborhood bridge is 50-50 Grand Forks, East Grand Forks. If you, every study that's been done over the decades, 30, 40 years, half the cars coming over, a neighborhood connection or Grand Forks license plates.
But anecdotally, Mayor, when you drive, when it's flooded and the Point Bridge is closed, it takes me five minutes to get to East Grand Forks, and then I'm in the line of three miles of cars coming to Grand Forks. I hear what you're saying. Studies are studies. Actual witnessing, actual data is probably more important, in my opinion. So when I had to take my mom to the clinic over there when the Point Bridge was closed, I literally got from the Alara Center to the clinic in eight minutes. That wasn't happening from all the people that were coming back.
So part of what I'm hearing, Mr. Sandy, is you're saying what's, part of what's driving your thinking is the overall congestion in the system as a whole and how long it takes to make trips generally from point to point, regardless of where you're going, between East Grand Forks, Grand Forks, inside the two cities, crossing the river, thinking about this is one labor market, one retail market, one region, right? But that, the overall congestion you're suggesting is part of what's driving your thinking.
Mr. Sandy, one quick question. Are you suggesting now that we not close the Point Bridge?
No, I still would prefer to close the Point Bridge, to be honest with you. That would solve a whole bunch of our problems.
So, Mr. Sandy, on top of this general congestion issue, are any other bigger picture issues that are driving what, how you're looking to move forward or decide on a future grid?
My opinion hasn't changed. I think everyone knows where I stand on the concept. I think Ms. Hallford is correct. And Mr. Weber asked the exact question that's important here. He asked, how many cars, how many more cars? Ms. Hallford was very nice to say, cars will go this way, cars will go that way. I don't, I'm not sure she actually understood the precise question he was asking. We know that if we put a bridge on 32nd Avenue South, the mass traffic that's going to be going through there will be considerable. It will change traffic patterns throughout our community. And with all due respect to my friends from East Grand Forks, the 32nd Avenue neighborhood is more people than all of East Grand Forks. And so solving one problem that is the Point Bridge, which it is, and we should figure out a solution for this. I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just saying putting that in an established neighborhood, I've been advocating for Elks, I've actually been advocating for farther north from that. Every time I say 17th Avenue South, Mayor Gander says, Elks. And we, so, Mayor?
I'm fine with 17th. It would be, it would be great. If it could work, if it met our traffic objectives, it would be great.
But Mayor, I hear what you're saying. What we need are four people on each council to vote in one direction, in the affirmative. This, we're so far beyond studies and traffic patterns and moving, and 12,000 miles. If we want to get a bridge in, we actually have to come to a location where people will support it, okay? We can do all the studies in the world, and when the study says 32nd Avenue South and the votes aren't there to do it, what's the point of going through that exercise?
The goal would be to identify a neighborhood connection that we can agree upon. That's really the goal.
Okay.
So the takeaway, Mr. Sandy, is you're also weighing the impacts on individual neighborhoods along with the changes to the system-wide traffic.
Certainly. In my opinion, we should build the bridge. So I'll get to my punchline. We should build the bridge at Merrifield. We should actually measure traffic. We should look at it, we should think about it. We shouldn't necessarily spend several hundred thousand dollars today to figure out the next steps for putting a bridge at 32nd Avenue South, because I believe that we're miles apart from coming to consensus. But that's just my opinion.
Great, thanks. So one of the, maybe one of the takeaways here, Ms. Hallford and Mr. Phelan and Mr. Murphy, is just a concrete, concise look at what traffic data we do have and what it says, right? Because a lot of that work has been done. There's really no need to do it again. It was just done again and finished here in early February. Any other further thoughts or comments on Ms. Lunskey?
I feel like I need to stick up for the Phoenix neighborhood a little bit. I'm feeling a little lonely in Ward 4, because I know a lot of Ward 4s here right now. But I feel like the argument is it can't be 32nd because of the school. But right now, Fourth Avenue gets all of it. Phoenix gets all of it. You know, we have that four-way stop sign with the blinky lights, which is a huge failure. And Phoenix has nothing. So I think by building another bridge, we're not saying stick all that traffic on 32nd. If you look at aerial photo, you see East Grand Forks is more north than Grand Forks. The Point Bridge, Demers, is still going to get a majority. If we build another bridge, it's just going to alleviate a little bit. And I think those kids at Phoenix deserve to get to school safely. It's not safe right now. A lot of those kids walk to school by themselves. And I just think that needs to be brought up, because I don't think there's a lot of Phoenix parents here right now. But they do need a voice.
Sure. So they're, on the Grand Forks side at least, it's becoming a situation of pitting one neighborhood against another to some extent.
Right. And we're not, we're not asking 32nd to take all of it. We're just asking to have some relief.
Sure. Great. How about from the East Grand Forks side? Any thoughts, any reactions to what you're hearing? Any thoughts about what's driving your thinking in East Grand Forks and why you've agreed to step forward and take the lead, at least on this early part of the process? Yeah, Mr. Demers, yeah.
Thank you. I guess stepping back a little bit, I always, when we talk or get the opportunity to talk with, you know, our community, I always go back to the beginning talks that we had when we talked about our, you know, our interconnect when it comes, when it comes to wastewater. And one of the things that Mr. Phelan said is, in the next 50 years, our growth, our prosperity, our ability to thrive as a community will depend on how well we can work together. I've always said that that's very, you know, poignant. It means that we really have to come together on a lot of these things. And to Mr. Sandy's point, yes, we have to negotiate and figure something out, but we also have to do something. I feel like our communities are kind of in a, in a spot where we're mired by kind of do-nothingness, that we, that we are projecting to our people in our environs that we aren't able to do not only the big things, but the little things or the medium things. And we really need to step up to do those things. So I appreciate this opportunity. To some of the points, I agree with Ms. Lunskey that, you know, what we want to build is a sustainable, efficient network of transportation between the communities, among the community that works, that something that is something that will allow us to thrive both economically, will be safe and work for people. I think that the, one of the keys to that is connections. The more connections that we build, the more efficient that we will be, the more diverse we'll be. I also remember back to the first part of my council career, I remember the articles that were in the Herald about North Dakota, and it was a lot of, woe is me, North Dakota, we're losing population, how are we ever going to bring jobs, and how are we going to do this? Fast forward 15 years, you know, it's one of the shining economies in the country, but those things change. If we look on short timelines, you know, we need to diversify this. Who knows what is going to come from the Minnesota side? You know, people want to live in Minnesota for some reason. Some people want to live in North Dakota for some reasons. You know, we, by giving that diverse opportunity of residences, places to build businesses, I think we become more vital, more diverse, more, more able to prosper. So I guess, like I said, we talk about these fundamental things or these technical things, but really, I think we, if we step back and think about the fact that these are important, the connections that we build matter. And I think, you know, what the, and stepping back and thinking about the MPO, putting that hat back on, is, you know, what we try to do is really take a data-driven approach to making sure that these connections, these corridors make sense, that they're efficient, they're safe, all those type of things. We try to, for the most part, take the anecdote out of it, because what the anecdote does is it interjects emotion. And we all know, being on councils, how much emotion drives some decisions. And what we try to do is create a data-driven approach. Now, there's always some discussion about how that, you know, data is derived, what it means, all those type of things. But I think the MPO has done a pretty decent job over the last decades of bringing the communities together, putting data to it, and getting some sort of irrational way to go forward with this. I guess back to the thing is, if we don't do something, I think, to the mayor's point, is we're going to look back on this 50 years from now when I have to talk to my crackheads and they're saying, either, why isn't there a bridge for two miles between our two cities? And/or why did we put this bridge that goes into this, you know, T-intersection or something like that? I just, that's my fear. And I... And I, like I said, we gotta do something. So, thank you.
So an interesting point there about the importance of data, again, but also I think even more interesting point from the big picture of, "Does this region want to grow?" And if it does, it seems like the answer to that is yes. If it does, what other issues does that create and how do we?
I just wanna add one, one thing, too, is about the south end growth. I mean, we, it's no, it's no mystery. I mean, East Grand Forks follows Grand Forks growth. I mean, that's what we're trying to, that's what people want to do. The reason why 32nd corridor is busy is because people want to get there. I mean, it's, it's a, like the mayor said, it's a demand model. Thankfully, we as government can't tell people where to live and what to do exactly. You know, we can't force them to live something. But to that point, that's kind of why we're doing this. The other, the other thing we have to really start thinking about is flood control. You know, Grand Forks is rapidly growing south. One of the advantages that East Grand Forks does have is that we have a lot of capacity within our, our flood control system. And that's why it becomes a very, a, a good place for people to look to buy or build or whatever. So like I said, Grand Forks is gonna hit your, your limits here probably way before we do, and you're gonna be looking to spend quite a bit of money, I would imagine, trying to expand that, extend it, where there's a natural release valve to the east to allow for that, that population. And we all know what we need or are gonna need for job growth and all that is some population growth. So having multiple opportunities for different resident opportunities, I think, is, is a benefit to the entire region.
So I do believe, Mr. Brooks, correct me if I'm wrong, but the current Grand Forks land use plan now through 2050 does essentially fill in most of the land up to the flood protection on the south end.
We get to, Mayor.
Right, right up to that level. Right, yeah, okay. Any other further thoughts from Mr. Vedder?
Thank you, Mark. For me, the decision-making, of course, we're looking at traffic flows, we're looking at safety, but I'm the money guy, so I'm always looking at the cash. Grand Forks and East Grand Forks, we can't do this on our own. We're gonna need state money, we're gonna need federal money. And one of the keys to getting federal money is the cost-to-benefit ratio. So for me, that's a big, big point in driving my decision, is where's the cost-benefit for whichever bridge we choose?
Excellent. Cost. Big issue. Yeah. Others? Yeah, Mr. Just.
Thank you, sir. One of the comments I wanna make, you know, I think we get to a point in, on a project like this, and we stop, we don't do anything, we don't go any forward, because there always seems to be, well, it's gonna be, you know, X, Y, Z. Well, we just can't do it. We just can't move forward. And that's what we're trying to do, is look at, okay, let's not stop ourselves and just say, "Well, we're not gonna do it." We need to keep moving forward and taking a look at this and say, "Okay, let's put in the hard work, let's get this together and work together with Grand Forks on it to talk about it, how we can achieve, you know, the safety goals of residents and traffic in schools." You know, work with State of North Dakota, and I'm sure there's some stuff that Safe Kids can work with to help design and revamp the school systems in the schools down there for the crossings and the safe drop-off. You know, we did that in East Grand Forks, they redid the drop-off, and it's a lot better for the kids. I think we can't be shortsighted of saying, you know, what, what is our, what drives our plan? I mean, you're just shooting stuff across the bow, it doesn't make any sense, because we can all just start throwing stuff back and forth, you're not gonna get anywhere. And it doesn't help. And I think we need to work together on this. We don't need to be going back and forth and saying, "Well, you just want this because of that." Well, where's your data on that? I can, it's not there.
So my takeaway there, Mr. Elstet, is to come to a decision, to move forward. And instead of saying, "Let's not put off a decision, let's come to a decision." Okay? Others from East Grand Forks? Yeah, Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I'd just add a slightly different take on it. You know, when I consider this bridge and, you know, where we are and what's led us up to this stage so far, one of the reasons I'm in favor of moving forward with the neighborhood bridge is it allows both of these council bodies and everyone here to take a proactive approach and work together to focus our attention on mitigating the negative impacts on the areas that are, that need that attention with that bridge. And so, school zones are of the highest priority, regardless of what side of the river, these are all our kids, as well as the, the residential neighborhoods that are most directly impacted by a neighborhood bridge. I think that that's, that's very clear. And if we take a proactive approach, we can focus our attention, our funding, our mitigation efforts to include the population and try to make this the, the best design possible for our community. On the flip side, if we wait and we're reactive and we continue down this approach that has led us so far, we're gonna get to a point where the data that was shown is gonna become a reality. Our transportation corridors will be overloaded, leaving us at a much higher risk of an accident. And when, if there is an accident, school zone or wherever, we're gonna be pushed into a reactive situation. And our focus, all of our focus, will be shifted away from mitigating the impacts on the local neighborhoods and the school zones, and we'll be trying to fix and stop this problem that happened from recreating itself. And so, by taking this proactive approach, I really think that that's the best answer for our entire community, and it's the fairest effort for everyone as well.
So Bean, reactive has, your argument is, and I'm asking, has very specific impacts in safety, in congestion, and so that there are consequences there to just, to not act?
Absolutely. If, if we're reactive and we're trying to fix a problem that, that happened by us not building this bridge, we're gonna pull away resources, focus and attention from these local neighborhoods, from these school zones that deserve that now by us building this bridge before something bad ever happens. That's our responsibility.
Sure.
Thank you.
Others from East Grand, yeah, Mr. Riappel?
I'm usually not one to agree with things that the mayors say, but Brandon, I gotta agree with something you said earlier in your statement. Bean, you were talking about the underpass. You said decades in the making. This bridge has been decades in the making. So, we need to get something going here.
Mr. Weber, yeah?
In, in reaction to what I've heard from East Grand Forks City Council members and some parts of Ms. Helford's presentation, do something. We, we see from the, the citizens, taxpayers' response, they want, the overwhelming majority want a bridge. And more than 50% want the 32nd Avenue Bridge.
Of those who responded?
Of those who responded. And, and we, we wanna make data-driven decisions until we don't like the data, but that's...
Figures lie and liars figure.
And, but we want data-driven decisions nonetheless, right? The cost-benefit analysis is strongly in favor of the 32nd Avenue Bridge. And we have federal funding now that is, is a rare thing. We, we wanna strike while the iron's hot. So if you're looking for answers to B, identifying key factors, here's what I heard. What, what do the people want us to do? They want us to move forward and make a decision. We've got, we need to be using the data that, that's been brought to us, and we need to think about the funding. I think those are three of the key factors that, that need to help us in our decision-making.
To see here, one of the other things I heard today was to codify the data we do have, articulate it, make sure it's clear, that we know what the data, at least that we've got now, shows.
And if we're concerned about the data, then we should work together with a consultant to make sure that we have the best data possible.
Absolutely. Mr. Bean?
Yeah, just a couple of additional items. I, I really like what we've heard so far and the information. I think we have to define a process. I think we're getting into the weeds a little bit somewhat here, trying to look at numbers and whatever. We gotta make sure we have a process that's workable for both sides, both communities, as we look forward, and, and something that is typically wrapped up in data. But if you come into a process that with a foregone conclusion, we're gonna have problems. Somehow, we gotta have a process that's open and will address the issues, and we need to define that issue, that problem, whatever we're trying to solve. I'd have to agree with Mr. Larson, 'cause when I went to work for the city, we were reconstructing Gateway Drive at that time, and, and a child was killed crossing Gateway. It's in the midst of the project, we built the underpass at Wilder. We don't want to have that happen. We want to try to be proactive and try to figure out how we can make it safe, and, and again, not have something that we have, we regret later on. So if we can focus on a process that gets us to a solution, and, and I think, keep that in mind as we expedite moving forward and work together.
Mr. Sandy?
All very good points. I think to Ms. Lunskey's comments, absolutely, we need to figure out relief for Phoenix Elementary. We need to make sure that our kids, that the kids that have to cross are safe and/or Belmont, of course, there. I will note that more kids that go to Phoenix live south and west of that corner than east or north. However, if you look at Kelly, almost every kid that goes to Kelly Elementary lives south of 32nd Avenue South, almost every one. And so, solving a problem at Phoenix, but causing a problem at Kelly, in my opinion, doesn't make sense. I think, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with Mr. Bean and, and everybody, and Mr. Demers, I appreciate your comments, and the MPO is data-driven. No question, the MPO is great at doing studies. Like, I've never met an organization that's better at doing studies than the MPO. This is a political decision. This is not a data-driven, mechanical decision. If we want to get a bridge built, we need to deal with the politics. And the politics, in my opinion, are, there has to be equal pain on both sides of the, of the river. And right now, there is only pain in Grand Forks and nothing but smooth sailing in East Grand Forks. It's really easy. So, yeah, and I, I, again, I think we should, I'm all for working together, and I'd like to see a bridge built in my lifetime. I would. I'm not anti-bridge. I would first like to see the Merrifield Bridge done, but I will even commit today. Let's get an inner-city bridge done. But there has to be some give and take, not just East Grand Forks saying it has to go to 32nd, 'cause that's all it's been for the last two years, and if we continue down that road, it's never gonna get built. So at some point, we have to compromise.
If I could...
Yeah, Mr. Gander?
In the last six years almost that I've served as mayor, whenever the question comes of, "What's the right corridor for this bridge?", honest to goodness, I just step back. I step back and let the MPO grind it out, cost-benefit. I let the MPO grind it out for traffic, accomplishing traffic objectives, and I step back, and I know eventually we're gonna have to deal with the political, political side of this. And I've said, "Our goal is really to find the, the corridor that really corrects our traffic problem that is most palatable for all of our residents." Now, it won't be equally painful to my dear friends in Grand Forks, because why? We haven't grown that far south yet, so I don't know how, you'd have to move it up into 17th or even 13th to, to cause equal pain. And those would not accomplish the traffic objectives, because you have to come down far enough south to, to really hit the sweet spot of, of proper utilization of the bridge. Please, no. If 17th came off, it was by no effort of mine. Just, I'm gonna say that as candidly as I possibly can, and ask Earl, ask anyone in the MPO, if 17 came off, the, the consideration, it was purely data-driven, it was no effort of mine. I love 17th. I could go as far north as 13th. North of 13th, this would do no good whatsoever. I've always said, "I could go as far north as 13th and come across and in, it would help a lot." 17th would help a lot. Elks T would help a lot. 32nd would help a lot. And honestly, any one of those, the, the preferred one from a traffic and data standpoint, when that discussion starts over these six years, I just sit back and say, "Y'all figure it out. Whatever we come up with, let's go. When the time comes and we, and we can nail it, let's go. Let's get this done." But to this selection, please trust me, and I, just check anything, talk to my friends, 17th would be great, but it doesn't hit the traffic criteria that the MPO was ever looking for. I guess I could ask Clarence, Mark Demers, you guys have sat at the table at the MPO, anyone else here, when 17th came off of consideration, it was all about traffic objectives, it was never about what the mayor preferred? Do you guys remember it that way?
Mayor, if, if I said, I never meant to imply that you personally got 17th. I didn't mean that.
No, no, no.
If I, if...
I don't have that much power.
I never even thought that. I, I never even thought that.
Perfect.
So we're clear, yeah. I never thought.
Ultimately, I think regardless between these sites, there's a somewhat similar system-wide traffic impact between, say, 17th, Elks, and 32nd, right? And so...
Actually, it looks very different. It looks very different from 17th to Elks to 32nd, looks very different.
So should I, I should say perhaps that the, the commute time or the drive time benefits on the east side are probably similar?
Yes.
That, that either way, you know, it doesn't necessarily matter to East Grand Forks in terms of where on that corridor it could be, as long as there's a bridge. Is maybe a better way to put that. Certainly on the Grand Forks side, there's differences, right? Because, right? So I would, I think the key takeaway here is, yeah, we talked a lot about data tonight, but there are concerns of neighbors, right? There are concerns of folks located where, and, and political concerns here that we do need to consider. Yeah. Mr. Cloney, you haven't had a chance yet.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna use, do I have more than three minutes? Can you keep going? All right, perfect. All right, awesome. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about this. So, it's interesting. So the reason I ran for city council was to spur on growth and to support growth and to support the community that I love to be in and where I chose to move my family to. So you look at things like the interchange and the underpass and things that are just so needed and very obvious, and it's like, "Why didn't this happen?" And it's very clear when you look at our communities, just like if you have to exit Thompson to go to Grand Forks, you look at Grand Forks and, and East Grand Forks, and you're like, "There's clearly something missing," right? But the problem is not data. We have plenty of data. I was fortunate enough to sit on the ad hoc committee. We have great data, but the data doesn't matter, right? I think it's emotional, I think it's something that we have to all agree upon. And, and something that we talked about was, was the compromise, right? And I feel like, it's almost like we have to take the, the number one choice off of the table for both cities and realize that we're not all gonna get what we want. And, and if we look at 47th, or we look at Elks, or we look at the North End Bridge, I think those all do something to move us forward, but it's not ideal. The, the problem is, all I've heard since I've, even before I ran, was 32nd, you, you better watch out. You know, that's not something that needs to happen. So I tried to experience that for myself. I drive it in the morning, and I go by, and there's, there's kids everywhere, there's traffic. Already, there's a pretty good amount of traffic, so I understand why that's a concern. I just think that we have to agree that we have to come to the table, we have to all feel a little pain, and I think that maybe there needs to be some people that agree to just give in a little bit. And, and that's where I think the, the crux is, is this meeting is, is, I'm so happy that I actually get to attend, I apologize for being late, but this, we need to do this a few more times, and we'll get there. What we can't do is not do this for two more years. So let's do it, let's figure it out. But I've had, I've had three people tell me 32nd, and I, and everyone else that I've talked to has said, "No." So I can't honestly say I support that, but I do support something. We need to do something. But we have to agree that we gotta give up. We gotta give up something that is, what is our ideal, 'cause it, it's not gonna work. Otherwise, we'll just do nothing.
Ultimately, this is painful, right? But yet, all in this context, I think Mr. Demers put pretty well that communities are growing, so traffic volume in this area is gonna, is gonna increase. The trade-off there could be, uh, stop building homes on either side of the river, but then it's, housing prices skyrocket, right? So it's this cascade of impacts, and there is no good solution. If there was, the bridge would be in place already. Mr. Sandy?
Just one additional question. We, we took 47th Avenue off the table because of the cost. Is 47th Avenue still under consideration in East Grand Forks, or is that off the table?
And anyone in MPO can weigh in. It, I believe 47th came off because it would not accomplish the objectives. If you look at the commute...
Right. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I, I understand what you're saying, and I know the data.
Nobody'd use it.
Right.
So it'd be a bridge that would do something other than a neighborhood connection.
Nobody would use the 47th...
Nobody of the, what we're trying to accomplish neighbor-wise, they would still use the Point Bridge. You'd still be pumping them hard by Phoenix Elementary. They wouldn't use it for their daily commute. It's too far south. That's how it would be. That's how it would be. It would accomplish something else. It would have traffic on it, not local traffic.
What traffic would it have?
It would be sort of an intermediate bypass. That's what it would be.
Not if we made changes to the Point Bridge connection.
It's not only, it wouldn't serve the traffic as well, but it's also the design, the flood mitigation and the design of the bridge and when it would need to be there. The cost would be huge.
But anything south of 32nd wouldn't be the neighborhood connection, and people would still go up to the Point Bridge.
And because of the geography, it's much more expensive. Okay. Ms. Lunskey.
I think there's some positives that we're not talking about either. Like, there's a neighborhood bridge, you know, I live close to the Point Bridge. It has no sidewalk, you cannot walk it. This neighborhood bridge would be walkable, we could make it, you know, so it kind of chokes the traffic, they can't go very fast, but it also gives you access to a whole new playground. Like, personally, I'm kind of bored walking my neighborhood with this neighborhood bridge. I mean, it opens up a whole new area to explore. I think everything we're talking about is negative, negative, negative. There are some positives here. I think that needs to be acknowledged.
Great point. So we do have a few members here of the MPO board, any, anything to add before? I know we've been at the, Mr. Weigle, you haven't had a chance, yeah?
I'd rather sat back and listen. Thanks. Sat back and listened a little bit. There's three things that kind of came to my mind as I've listened to everybody. One of them is I've heard the term neighborhood bridge many, many times from both the mayors, East Grand Forks City Council, and even Grand Forks City Council. Is this a neighborhood bridge? Are we going from neighborhood to neighborhood? Because it doesn't seem like that. I feel like we're going from neighborhood to business, or neighborhood to the Alara Center, or neighborhood to stores or shopping. That's not a neighborhood bridge. That's, in my opinion, that's a commuter bridge. We're looking to get from one side of the city to the next. And if that's the case, then we should call it that. But neighborhood to neighborhood, I live in the northwest corner, if I'm going to another neighborhood, I'm going to the university, right? I'm taking, I'm going down the road, and I go over a bridge, going to a neighborhood. This seems more like a commuter bridge, to go from one community to the other for shopping or work, or whatever the case may be. And then the other point that I wanted to bring up is, we've both said that our communities are growing south. We're continuing to grow south, but yet we're looking at putting a bridge right in the middle of our city. And so let's look to the future. If East Grand Forks is moving south, Grand Forks is moving south, then let's go south with the bridge. Not in the middle of a city, not to severely impact the neighborhood, to have safety issues in front of a school or two. Let's go south and build for that future then. And that's what I have.
Great. My guess on the term neighborhood bridge, Ms. Hopper, I could be wrong, but it's because that picture you had in this area of the screen at one point, it's called that because it's sort of a low bridge that feels more like a neighborhood street, but I think Mr. Weigle's point is pretty good, that it, maybe the purpose and the type of traffic it handles is a better way to name it, and that term should be retired. But that, is that, because it's not a high bridge, it's a low bridge that's more supposed to be for local traffic, is why that neighborhood bridge word comes from. But certainly, it would serve commuters, it would serve shoppers, it wouldn't be necessarily just to visit your friend on the other side of the river.
Correct. Yeah, it's going to have more of that Point Bridge feel. It's not more that, it's not going to look like a big, like a Kennedy or a Sorley-type bridge. And it will be signed with no truck traffic on it, so it's going to have that more leisurely kind of bridge feel. It's not going to, and to your point, yes, it'll probably serve the south end, East Grand Forks people to maybe do some more shopping on the Grand Forks side, go to the restaurants on that side instead of going to the ones downtown. They might go there more often, or go to their jobs, but it would still have that smaller traffic feel. Again, some other things I was hearing too, to kind of circle back. That traffic is still going to happen if we do nothing at all. It's going to go through the downtown, it's going to go through Kennedy, even though you're seeing more heartache and concerns with certain corridors building a bridge, but that traffic's going to come no matter what. And it's going to, if we do nothing, then we need to look at doing some different designs at intersections and corridors in both sides of the city, because we're going to reach capacity. There's neighborhoods and certain corridors where we're going to have to add some lanes, we're going to have to change four-way stops to streetlights, we're going to have to add roundabouts, there's things like that to look at. It's going to come no matter what, and I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on that. Things are coming, we're growing, and it's better to be, kind of go back to, to be proactive instead of reactive. And that's kind of where Ivan was wanting to hit on, is that these studies are telling us that we're growing. We're already seeing capacity issues, but we have the opportunity to do something about it. It's not going to be an easy decision. I can't make the decision. I know that's been kind of a, we're just waiting for the MPO to make a decision. I can give you the data, and I can help you educate and spread that around, but again, it's going to be a tough decision no matter what, even if we do nothing. There's still things we're going to have to do, so.
So Mr. Weigle, real quick.
I'll just add, I'm in favor of doing something. I think that's important. I've always said that there'd be nobody more excited than the people in Ward 1 to have a bridge built in their backyard, and that's to get across to Demers Avenue. We talk about inconvenience. I hit the train today trying to jump onto Demers to get downtown. I hit it multiple times a week. I get the inconvenience. I get having to drive around. I literally had to go north to get on the interstate to get to Demers to go over the train. I 100% understand that. I get it. But like you said, we're continuing to grow south, so let's go to a place where we're both growing to and not just stop where we're still growing. We're stopping at 32nd, let's go to that future and look at that and be proactive so it's ready for the future, so that when this gets built in 10 years, when I'm off the city council hopefully, we can say we looked at the future. Right now, I don't think we're looking too far into the future. I think we're looking at what works now in East Grand Forks and even part of Grand Forks as well.
So Mr. Weigle, you're alluding to the underpass at 42nd as one of the major costly priorities Grand Forks is weighing. So we're winding to a close here, I think, real quick to Mayor Gander, then to Mr. Ross.
Just to the southern location, and I hear, I hear what you're saying, you want to be really thinking ahead 10, 20, 30, 40 years. You've probably seen the maps. This bridge, if it would be 32nd or if it would be the Elks T, it takes off at about the southern edge of our flood control system, a large undeveloped tract. That is about probably 30, 40 years of residential growth for us. So just so you know, at this location, if it's 32nd or Elks T, it's a very futuristic positioning for us, which also then would be for the benefit of Grand Forks. If we had to jump over our current flood control system and continue growth to the south, for sure, that's where the next bridge would come in, probably 50 years from now. This bridge, and then, and folks could come a bit north and go. So really, in terms of a long-range benefit, this is a 40, 50-year benefit before you'd have to do another neighborhood connection. And then by then, of course, you'll have, I think you'll have down there to the bypass bridge, so you'll have a really nice network laid out of bridges. So this really is a futuristic view. This is not a Band-Aid approach. This is looking ahead.
Great. Mr. Ross.
Okay, I think most of you know who I am. 40 years on the sheriff's office, 18 years doing crossing guard at Kelly School, and I deal with traffic every day. I'm very compassionate about the kids. I worry about them, and that's why I'm out there doing it. I think to put a bridge at 32nd Avenue would be the wrong choice. I think, I understand what Mayor Gander's saying about the population in East Grand Forks, but I'm, I'm for the Merrifield Bridge. I would like to see that. Right now, Thompson Homes is already out to 62nd Avenue, and so it's another mile to the Merrifield Road. In fact, I call it the Roland Young Memorial Bridge, because he was pushing that 30 years ago, and I can't tell you how many times he was in my office. But anyway, I think that something has to be done, but I think if you're looking to the year 2045 or whatever you're looking at, you need a bridge that you can, that people are going to be to and probably even pass that by 2045. So, and like I say, safety of the kids is going to get worse if there's a bridge at 32nd Avenue. And Schrader, I wish I could be there too, but I can't, so.
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. So, Mr. House?
I just want to, my point on this, on this bridge hasn't changed. A couple of things concern me. One of them is, and it was brought up about the people on the point being able to get out to 32nd Avenue faster. That concerns me, because I'm worried about downtown East Grand Forks with that happening, because that's where they would go, be much quicker, and that's what they would do, head out there, do all their shopping, or their movies, anything, they could go out there and do it all. That really bothers me, and I brought that up to our council, that that's a big concern. The other thing that's a big concern to me too is that we don't need another wet bridge. And 32nd is going to be a wet one. We need a dry one. And this year particularly should prove that point, with as long as we had that Kennedy Bridge open, the only bridge, this should prove the point, we need a dry bridge, not a wet one.
Great, thank you. So consideration on a wet versus dry bridge. So I think we're wrapping, so barring any further comments?
Go ahead, let, Mr. Strandell, I got one thing, yeah.
Mr. Strandell?
Just some background, as far as Polk County goes, we have two bridge projects underway. One, the Climax Bridge is likely to be replaced in 2024. And between Senators Smith and Klobuchar, I have a request in Congress for funding for a Merrifield, for the Neillsville Bridge. And that would be all federal money, and it would probably be enough, a big enough grant to cover both sides of the cost of that project. And as far as the Merrifield Bridge, that's been on our schedule for years. We're very supportive of that one. So if that moves forward, I think you can point out Polk County's support.
Mr. Strandell, you're also a county commissioner, correct?
Yes, I am.
In Polk County.
Yes.
Excellent. Great, well, barring anything further, Mr. Bachanski, I think you have the floor.
Yeah, I guess we can wrap up, but I, you know, my comments are pretty similar. I think the problem here, and we can talk proactive and reactive, but the proactive bridge for East Grand Forks is certainly 32nd. That's far decades reactive for Grand Forks. The proactive bridge for Grand Forks is Merrifield Road. We've got, you know, housing costs that are very high to begin with, which makes it a challenge, but there is some value that you have to realize when you move somewhere. If it's not where you need to go regularly, you have to deal with your trans, you know, you have to driving there, the traffic, all the good and the bad. When you pick a place to live, you got to deal with the good and the bad. What concerns me about the Phoenix area is that growth to the south, they didn't sign up for that, they've had to deal with that. So mitigation needs to happen there. But the proactive bridge, and then how Grand Forks, what makes the most sense for us is to get Merrifield done, and it's going to, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. It's going to be tough, you know, East Grand Forks, we want to work together, we want to find a path, but it is really hard to try to connect in the middle of our city without starting, you know, with Merrifield, because that's the proactive choice for us. Otherwise, we're sitting here later trying to be reactive again. So that, those are my thoughts. I'm glad everybody, you know, the comments, it's, it's an issue that is going to cause some friction between our cities regardless. And it's not even just city to city, it's going to cause friction within our cities, because there's people, certainly in Grand Forks, that want that 32nd. And friction is hard, but you know, we find an answer, and we make the most of it. It's all we can do. It's, bridge should have been built a long time ago, and it didn't get done.
Let's see if we can move them both. Let's see if we can move them both.
Great. So the immediate next steps coming out of this tonight are East Grand Forks spearheading this project to outline the process, right?
Yeah, and I guess, I would say that we would certainly look forward, we would really, really like Grand Forks to have a elected representative and a staff representative on the selection committee to review this, for nothing else, to get their input on it. So I would hope that we could get something from the Grand Forks City Council over here, hopefully in the near future, that they would be willing to participate in that.
Is there a process to adjourn?
Well, I think we could just adjourn. You want a motion to adjourn for somebody that's on there? Unless everybody wants to sit here for longer, you can do that too. We got a motion, we got a second. There, the two cities coming together to end a meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned.